Let's call the Pasadena City Council meeting order September the 6th, 2016. If we will all stand please. Freddie Cullens, head of school, First Baptist Church Christian Academy. We'll give his invocation.
Mayor, I'd like to commend you and the city council for your work for our community. I know it's sometimes a thankless job, but we appreciate your leadership in what you do. I want to commend you also for the fact that you take time for prayer. Our country was founded on these principles of respect for God. I'm glad we still do that in our city today. Let's pray together. Today, Lord, we just bow before you as the King of kings, the Lord of lords, the great Creator, God. We realize that all power and authority is given to you in heaven and in earth. And so we bow before you to say that we want to honor you, we want to respect you. Father, I pray that you be with these leaders of our community as they lead in our community and give them wisdom to make great decisions. Father, we thank you for the freedom we have in this country. We thank you for the opportunity to help our citizens to live in a land of peace and a land of goodness and a land of rightness. So we pray your blessing upon them, guide them in the decisions they make. And we thank you for your great love for us. Thank you for your provision and blessing on our country. I pray that you help our people to love what's right and good and to love you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Freddie.
Please join in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Okay. Councilmember Wheeler.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to recognize the employees that have 25 years of service. It's three employees, 25 years. Congratulations, and thank you for your service to the city. That'll pass.
Seventy-five years. Councilmember Bass.
Good morning. We've got good weather. Hopefully, it's the 20% to 30% somewhere else on the rain. Sorry for the folks in Florida, but I'm glad it turned and went up the East Coast. So we had a good Labor Day weekend. Notice that our Pasadena Chamber, Christina Womack's here today. And thank you, Mr. Cullens, for that invocation. With that, I'll pass.
Councilmember Wheeler.
Thank you, Mayor. Freddie, thank you for the prayer. With that, I'll pass.
Councilmember Fadron out.
Good morning. The police department had their graduation two weeks ago, and we have 10 new officers on the street. Congratulations to them, and it'll be good to see them out there. Fire Station 5 has its grand opening Saturday, September 17th at 10:00 a.m. This is it. 4725 Spencer, next to the Dairy Queen. I hadn't been by there in quite a while and went past this weekend, and it is really smazzy-looking. Very impressive, and I'm looking forward to the tour.
Councilmember Morrison.
Okay. Well, Freddie Cullens, thank you for sharing the invocation with us today. And again, I'll just highlight that Freddie is the head of the school at First Baptist Christian Academy, where I go to church, is First Baptist Church, there was the school par with that. My daughter graduated from there about, oh, gosh, it seemed like yesterday. I think it's been eight years ago now. But y'all have a great school there. My wife teaches kindergarten there. And one other good point, state baseball champions at the FBCA a couple of years ago. Coach David Turner does a great job with your baseball program, so keep it up, David, and keep it up what you're doing there, Freddie. And also, I'd just like to say condolences to the family of Russ Goss. And for those of you who don't know him, Russ Goss was the president of our homeowner association in Village Grove area for many years. And he'd often hold, I'd call it, he's holding court down at Panera's at about 8:00 every morning. So you can go down there and see him, but just a great guy. But just my heart goes out to his wife, Susan, and their family as well. With that, I'll pass.
Yeah. Councilmember Yubara.
Hope everybody had a good Labor Day. I do want to recognize Jason Shirley, John Cutshaw, and Isidro Rodriguez, 25 years of service. Thank you for your years of service. Also, a couple of weeks ago, myself, Councilmember Morrison, and Councilmember Casados teamed up with Officer Garza with the Pasadena Police Department, and we did a backpack school event for 100 kids that needed some backpacks going back to school. So I do want to thank Officer Garza for that event, and also, I mean, Councilmember Casados and Councilmember Morrison for their help on it. That'll pass.
Councilmember Levin.
Thank everybody for coming out this morning. People, 25 years of service, thank you for your service to the city. Welcome to employees, and with that, I'll pass.
Councilmember Casados.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the 25-year service employees. We appreciate all your service. Also, touching on Councilman Ybarra, we had the, 2 weeks ago, we had the backpack giveaway. It was a great, great function. I'd like to thank Officer Garza and the police department for helping us put that together. It was outstanding. It was great. And with that, I'll pass.
Okay. Notice over the weekend, the University of Houston won. We beat Notre Dame. Also, as Pat has mentioned about the opening of the new fire station on Spencer Highway. If you haven't seen it, it is a beautiful, beautiful new fire station. You'll be quite pleased that the citizens of Pasadena built that. Also, in the audience, I see my son-in-law, Johnny Carson, sitting back there. Johnny, raise your hand. I tell you, he's one of the best son-in-laws anybody could have. He is a great father and a great husband. Okay. You brought somebody with you?
Sir.
Is somebody there with you?
I'm with Fred.
You want to stand up? Stand up, say your name. Look at them.
I'm with Fred. I'm Ben and Bethany, our assistant.
Yes, you have. And that's, Johnny is president of the Baywood Shadows Civic Club out there. So good to see y'all. Thank you for participating in the community events there in our neighborhood. Okay. It's down to Randy. You ready?
No citizens.
Oh, yeah, we do have some citizens, don't we? Karen Holland, where are you at? There you are, you're already ready.
Honorable Mayor, city council members, it's good to be here today. I'm coming to you as representative of the Pasadena Industrial Community Network. I'm excited to let the community know that the Rotary Club of Pasadena attended our last meeting. The industry leaders voted to then include them in our industry network, and we have our first partnership that will happen at the beginning of October. There are 4,500 dictionaries that Rotary gives out to Sparks Elementary 3rd graders. And our industry network leaders will partner with the president of Rotary, and we're going to be handing those out. And it's real exciting that we are broadening our spectrum with the industry network and taking in such a dignified organization to team with us. And I've just been grateful for that. It's another way to serve our citizens. And the people who don't have a lot of labor skills that can get out there and do fences and houses, this will give them an avenue to help people in Pasadena as well. And with that, I hope you all have a good week, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Great leader of the Chamber of Commerce, Christina Womack.
Mayor, city council members, I just want to come and invite you guys all again to our Partners in Education Business Expo that's happening on this Thursday, September 8th, at the Pasadena Convention Center. Thanks to the city for hosting us. We have 70 vendors confirmed for this event, a mix of nonprofit organizations, businesses, and different city departments as well. So it'll be a great opportunity to come and meet fellow business people within the city of Pasadena. So invite everybody to come. It's from 3:30 to 6:30. There will be door prizes, lots of free giveaways, some food, and lots of networking. So make plans to attend that. Also, I want to make sure that you guys all know that if you've ever wondered what the Chamber does or what we do with your investments, then I invite you guys all to attend a Membership 101 orientation. Also, this Thursday at 8:30 in the morning at the Chamber office, so you can start the day learning about the Chamber and end the day networking with Chamber members. So it's an hour-long investment. So for anybody who's ever wondered how to make the most out of their current membership investment or how to take advantage of the things that we have available, you can come to that event. And then in the fall, we are gearing up for Taste of the Town. This year is the Super Bowl edition, so city council members, you all will each be receiving your VIP invitation. But at this event is about 3,000 people. You have 30 different restaurants. This year's theme, the Super Bowl edition, so it'll be a lot of food fun, tailgating, and an expansion outside. So at this event takes a lot of committee volunteers to pull it off, so I appreciate everybody who sponsors. If you are interested in getting tickets, you can get those online at PasadenaChamber.org. Hope to see you at one of our upcoming events. Thank you.
Wow. Christina, thank you. And thank you for doing a great job with our city here and at the Chamber in particular. I don't know how you just speak like that so fast and for so long.
What are you timing?
No, you get special time. Okay. Now, Randy, would you up to you?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mayor and council, it's my pleasure to introduce the service award recipients for this month. First is Jason Shirley, police officer. Where's Jason? There he is, right there. I didn't see him. And I tell you, when I saw his name on the list, I thought, he must have started when he was 10 years old. 25 years, it doesn't leave. Come on over here so they can get on the camera. So there you go. Congratulations. You bet, you bet. Next up here is Isidore Rodriguez, sanitation, 25 years. And John Cutshaw couldn't make it. He's out there at the golf course, bringing in some money with those green fees and everything, but we'll make sure he does get his award for 25 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Izzy, you've been 25 years now. Good Lord. What a great job you're doing, and I want to thank you for that. And Jason, 20, how can it be 25 years? I remember when you came on, of course. Good Lord. And related to the police, let me just say, men in blue do matter, as all lives matter. Okay, it gets down to the minutes of August 16th.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Lehman, second by Councilmember Wheeler, that minutes of August 16th, 2016, be approved. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Progress payments 13A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Casados, second by Councilmember Wheeler, that progress payments to our contractors who are getting jobs in the city be approved. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Financial Resolution 2717.
Motion.
Motion. Motion by Councilmember Lehman, second by Councilmember Casados, Financial Resolution 2717 be approved. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to abstain from anything regardless of pass or not.
Yes, sir. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Personnel changes 15A and D.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Yubara, second by Councilmember Wheeler, personnel changes be approved. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? You're hired. It's down to Mayor's report, final reading. Randy, you're going to introduce?
I'm going to introduce. Thank you. Again, my pleasure to introduce the new employees for this month. First off, we have Celine Bettencourt, financial assistant, housing administrator in the housing department. She is a graduate of Sam Rayburn High School and also a graduate of the University of Houston, Clear Lake, where she obtained her bachelor's degree in accounting prior to work for the city. She worked for a community bank as a compliance assistant. Thank you. Next is Pernima Brooks, Assistant, Office Assistant 1, police support, graduate from LaPorte High School, prior to working for the city. She was at Papa's Meat Company as a server. Thank you. Next is Juan Carlos Sanchez Jr., Parks Worker 1 in Parks Department. Mr. Sanchez comes to the city with previous employment as welding and scaffolding with Brand and Salisbury Industrial, working for the city. And also worked for, as a produce, showman produce, as a selector, I'm sorry. And he's graduated from Chavez High School. Thank you. Lauren Saylor, Office Assistant 1, police support. She is a graduate from Southwestern University in Georgetown in a degree in anthropology.
Wow.
She knows how we looked many, many millions of years ago, right? And obtained her bachelor's degree. Prior to work for the city, she worked for Insperity Employment Survey and is from Crosby, Texas. Thank you. Donald, Donnie Taylor Jr., Parks Superintendent Parks, a graduate from Sam Rayburn High School, prior to working for the city, worked for Harris County Precinct as a Parks Manager, Pasadena native, and lives now in Pearland with his family. Thank you. And last but not least, Nicholas Zapata Rodriguez, Building Technician 5, Building and Equipment. He brings a wide range of experience in maintenance repairs, prior to working for the city. He worked for HISD as a painter and later as a maintenance tech. And he comes to us from Mexico, has been in the country since the last nine years. Thank you. Those are our new employees.
All right. Well, welcome aboard to the city of Pasadena, and we hope that you'll be here in 25 years. Get your watch or ring or pin, I think it is. But again, welcome aboard. Okay, council, it's down to Mayor's reports. Final reading.
Ordnance 2016-113, extend annual contracts with MD and Enterprises Act Pipe Supply, Southern Supply Company and Martha Supply Company for purchase of wastewater fillings and supplies. Ordnance 2016-114, contract with TriCoastal for rehabilitation of single-family home at 2209 Huntington Drive, $62,800.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wheeler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Casados, that ordinance 2016-114, pass on second. And final reading, is there any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Gets down to first reading, Madam Secretary.
Ordnance 2016-115, annual budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2016, and terminating September 30, 2017.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Morrison, second by Councilmember Wheeler, that ordinance 2016-115, pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. It's down to item B, Madam Secretary.
Ordnance 2016-116, enter local agreement with the city of Houston for household hazardous waste disposal services.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wheeler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lehman, that ordinance 2016-116, pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Ordnance 2016-117, an ordinance accepting, approving, and adopting the evaluation and assessment of all real and postal property in the city of Pasadena, Harris County, Texas, for the 2016 tax year, designating the Harris County, Texas, Assessor Collector as the responsible official to prepare effective enrollment rates and certifying a 2016 tax collection rate, providing for repelling costs and containing a separability clause.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wheeler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Casados, that ordinance 2016-117, pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Ordnance 2016-118, purchase of one AB07 Dusen portable air compressor from Blue Line Rental at $96,281.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wheeler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Morrison, that ordinance 2016-118, pass on first reading only. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Ordnance 2016-119, contract with Diamond Erectors for purchase and installation of a canopy with foundation for Queens Park, $29,085.
Motion by...
Bruce.
Second.
Councilmember Lehman, second by Councilmember Wheeler, that ordinance 2016-119, pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember.
I want to thank Kirby Cardenas and Parks and Recreation. I've been talking to Kirby for quite a while about making some improvements at Queens Park because that park is now being utilized much more now than it has in many years. And I just want to thank Kirby for his work on this. That'll pass.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Ordnance 2016-120, contract with K&amp;K Tractor Service LLC for demolition of a single-family home located at 216 Alistair Drive, $3,872.
Motion by Councilmember Wheeler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Casados, that ordinance 2016-120, pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Ordnance 2016-121, contract with Solid Construction Solutions, LLC for the reconstruction of a single-family home located at 216 Alistair Drive, $121,000.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wheeler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Casados, that ordinance 2016-121, pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Ordnance 2016-122, contract with K&amp;K Tractor Service LLC for demolition of a single-family home located at 1209 Sunset Drive, $4,195.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wheeler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lehman, that ordinance 2016-122, pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Ordnance 2016-123, contract with Solid Construction Solutions, LLC for the reconstruction of a single-family home located at 1209 Sunset Drive, $118,800.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Casados, whether?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wheeler, that ordinance 2016-123, pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Ordnance 2016-124, purchase of one Ferrari 5 apparatus HD 77, 77-foot ladder truck and one Ferrari 5 apparatus custom rescue pumper from Hall Buick GMC at $1,584,509.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Morrison, second by Councilmember Casados, that ordinance 2016-124, pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? Let me just say, in a discussion, this is purchasing a ladder truck and a pumper, a new ladder truck and a new pumper for a fire station for the citizens of Pasadena, $1,584,000. Lot of money. But when you need it, you really need it. So any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Ordnance 2016-125, extend the annual contract with cherry crushed concrete for flexible base materials.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wheeler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Van Houtt, that ordinance 2016-125, pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Ordnance 2016-126, annual contracts with Bay Area Rentals Zone A and Calphor Rentals Inc. Zone V for the purchase of Ucard Concrete.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Bass, second by Councilmember Wheeler, that ordinance 2016-126, pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Ordnance 2016-127, extend the annual contract Dorset Concrete for purchase of ready-mixed concrete.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wheeler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Casados, that ordinance 2016-127, pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Ordnance 2016-128, amend ordinance number 2016-85 Pipeline Verigence Flint Hills Resources Houston Chemical LLC for 4-inch propylene pipeline.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Wheeler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Morrison, that ordinance 2016-128, pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Ordnance 2016-129, annual renewal of Novo Master License Agreement and Maintenance for software with Micro Focus Software Inc., $71,811.74.
Move.
Motion by Councilmember Van Houtt, second by Councilmember Wheeler, that ordinance 2016-129, pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Ordnance 2016-130, purchase of 16 vehicles from Silsby Ford, $557,709.12.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Lehman, second by Councilmember Wheeler, that ordinance 2016-130, pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Ordnance 2016-131, contract with HD Supply Inc. for purchase of 735 Neptune water meters,
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Yubara, was it?
Yeah.
Second by Councilmember Wheeler, that ordinance 2016-131, pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Ordnance 2016-132, extend annual contracts with GT Distributors Inc. Group 1 and Central Police Supply Group 2 for the purchase of police duty gear, badges, and accessories.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wheeler, second by Councilmember Van Houtt, that ordinance 2016-132, pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Ordnance 2016-133, increase the salary structure by 30% and provide a pay increase of 3% of base salary for every full-time non-classified civilian employee and part-time non-classified civilian employee whose standard hours equal 20 or more and for every classified police officer, effective for the payroll period beginning October 10, 2016.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Morrison, second by Councilmember Wheeler, that ordinance 2016-133, pass on first reading only. Is there any discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember.
Yes, I'd like to go ahead and send out a shout-out or thanks to Councilmember Ybarra. He kind of helped push this thing through, and I think it's a great thing for the employees of the city of Pasadena. They deserve it. They work hard out there. It's been hot this summer, and you guys deserve it. So again, thank you, Councilmember Ybarra. Appreciate that.
Well, I wanted 5%, but...
Yeah.
No, no, you're right. You did speak to me about that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Mayor.
Oh, Mayor. Councilmember?
You said something first.
I'll go first then. No, I just want to say, Mayor, I do appreciate your consideration too as far as starting this in October rather than January 1. For most of us in our own, have our businesses and things, January 1 is the typical, what we call the fiscal year or calendar year, and that's when most raises in companies begin. For cities, for the city of Pasadena, basically, it's October 1 begins that fiscal year. So basically, you're beginning it at the start of the fiscal year, and I appreciate that.
Councilmember.
As I've said before, there's always got to be one fly in it. When we got the original budget, it had a 2% cost of living. And in the workshop, there was one person who suggested it should be 3 instead of 2. And so it was changed without having any group discussion with council. This year, the Consumer Price Index went up 0.8%. Last year, the Consumer Price Index didn't go up at all, and the employees got a 2% raise. Now, if we did a 2% raise, that would be an extra 1.1 million in salary. But when you add in overtime, sick pay, pension, social security, the various other things, it's actually 1.4 million. And what we put in the budget was 985,000, or less than a million, because we weren't starting this in October, we were starting it in January. Now what we're getting will cost over 2 million with a budget amount that's less than 1 million. And what I've been told is, well, we'll make an amendment to the budget later. The thing is, we don't need to just pay our employees. And yes, we have a lot of good workers, and we do need to pay them well, and we need to do a better job of doing merit raises for the ones who are really doing good work. But we don't have to just pay for employees. We need to pay for the materials and equipment for them to get some work done. I'm willing to give a raise that fits with what the actual cost of living has been, but I'm not comfortable with spending money that has not been budgeted.
Okay. Any further comment?
Mayor.
Councilmember.
Councilwoman Van Hout, she's correct. You know, the Consumer Price Index went up 0.8%, and that's a national evaluation. But you also have to look locally. Here in Harris County, there's people moving in from all over the country. It's a growing area. And in the last two years, property values have increased roughly 30%, which in turn increases property taxes and cost of living and rent and all those things. So yes, although we've only seen a slight increase in goods and services, the price that we're paying to live in our homes and in our apartments is increasing. And I think that this type of raise reflects that. Furthermore, we are purchasing equipment. Just on this agenda alone, we're purchasing 16 police cars and 1.5 million dollar fire engine. And so I don't see a neglect necessarily in equipment, and I see it relative to the economy here locally. So I'm supporting this.
Wow. Wheeler and I agree.
Yeah.
With everything he said. Any further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember.
We live in a competitive job market, and in order to attract good employees, we have to pay them a decent salary. And I would much rather give a 3% pay increase than a lesser pay increase and encourage the employees we have to stay. And on the same note, bring in new employees to the city of Pasadena. So I am in favor of the 3% pay raise. Thank you.
Let me just say, I guess in closing, that we have got some great, not just good, but we've got some great employees here at the city of Pasadena. And I think they're well-deserved, and of course, we'll support the 3%.
Mayor.
And Councilmember.
I just want to say, thank you for your consideration on the 3%. With that being said, there was a discussion about, that nobody got to say something. We had a budget workshop, the 3% was brought up. Not a single council member said anything. They had an opportunity to say something, voice opposition or support for it. Nobody said nothing. Agenda came out last week. Yes, it was a holiday. Nobody said anything about it on Tuesday, this morning. They did bring it up. Nobody asked for it to be deferred or anything like that. Yeah, it is, the cost of CPI, they go up 1%. But 50% of the city employees make under $50,000 a year. I speak to those people out in the field. They're not making any money. They're struggling. Their wife, their family, they live paycheck to paycheck. And for me, for those employees at the bottom that are making 50%, I mean $50,000 or less, me giving them a 3%, I think it's worth it. And really, it quakes to be something like $1,200 a year. We haven't got the health insurance rates at the moment, but it's very likely that the health insurance rates for employees are probably going to go up. What the percentage is, I don't know, but typically, it will go to 5% to 6%. So with that being said, is, this 3% is nothing for the employees to do the work out there. It ain't none of these council members or the mayor that are out there sweating, digging the ditches, cutting the high grass and all the other stuff that happens out there, it's those city employees. And so I also put 3% with that being said.
Any further discussion? I don't know what's going on around here today, but I ditto again, Mr. Yubara. Everything you said. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Councilwoman Van Hout, about snow on the employee pay raise. Gets down to resolutions.
Resolution 2016-86, donation of $250 for the annual Christmas tree lighting from Cost of Flow Measurement Companies.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Wheeler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Casados, that Resolution 2016-86 be adopted as it was read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-87, donation of $250 for the annual Christmas tree lighting from Novos Wood Group.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Bass.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wheeler, that Resolution 2016-87 be adopted as it was read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-88, donation of $1,146.26 from Millstead Middle School, 6th Grade National Honor Society for the Care of Animals at the Animal Shelter.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Casados, second by Councilmember Wheeler, that Resolution 2016-88 be adopted as it was read. This is nice. This is the Millstead Middle School, 6th Grade National Honor Society class donating to our animal shelter for the care of our animals in our shelter. Thank y'all very much. $1,100. Thank y'all very much. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-89, donations from various businesses, organizations, or individuals, totaling $5,950.55 for care of animals housed at the animal shelter.
Move.
And the name, okay, I was going to read them. And the names of the ones making the donations are Phil and Rhonda Chandler, Cody Millstead, Jennifer Driscoll, Doris Gillis, Jonathan Ramirez, Adrian Snow, Michelle Urquiso, Oscar and Wendy De Toro, American Legion Post, Melissa West, Jessica Garcia, Amber Smith, Jenny Kelly, Maxwell, and Odilia, Esca, Paige DeBose, April Spencer, Wendy Lentz, Jamie Lusk, Amy Gwen, Regina Graves, Amy Guerra, and Richard Duncan, Kalani Mupapavaru, Matthew Hodges, Natalie Wright, Richard Duncan, Maribel, Granado, Cynthia Monroe, Zahara Norman, Josef and Rodolfo Segala, Cynthia Smith, Suzie Falleonor, Adams, Temi, Gil, Nicole, and Ruben Plata, Diana Albret, Larry Youngberg, Gillian, Esca, Robert Watson, Jeremy Friend, Tiffany Bearden, Maria Rodriguez, Marta Graybill, Richard King, Stephanie DeGeorge, Paige Wilford, Sharon Santik, Margaret Algeria, and Pasadena, Peta Jobson, Mary Von, Maurice Houtling, Elizabeth Perry, Jessica Uderate, Cynthia Herden, Yvonne Garcia, Katie DeBart, Kathy Signora, Sammy Durant, Sheila Selman, Isaiah Torres, Michael Solis, Christina Pierce, Mandy Edge, Brenda Smothers, Debbie Sizmore, Felicia Johann, Luis Azkosta, Karina Lowman, Margaret Palmer, Jackie Wells, Rosina Salsa, Roberta Leal, George Gutierrez, Robert Atkins, Jennifer Melton, Stephanie, Richard, and John Mosher, in the combined amount of, as I said, $5,950.55.
Motion by Councilmember Van Hout.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wheeler. Madam Secretary, I think you missed a name there. Did you? Have you repeat that?
They must have all given it all.
Wow. Yes, again, to go into our animal shelter. Is there any discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember.
It's like the credits on a movie screen. If your name's up there, you're going to see it or you're going to hear it. So listen and watch for it. It's going to be on TV for a couple of weeks. Also, most of these folks don't do it for the recognition of their name. They do it because they care for the society.
That's exactly right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.